I pledge I pledge pious to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community in charge of conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. When that time comes, we can read the directions for addressing the Board if there's anybody that is looking to speak today. So with that being said, we do some roll call here tonight.
Aiden Warner. Miranda Thompson. Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mrs. Junker Davis.
Here, her mom.
Mr. Stabell.
Present.
Mr. Grill.
Present.
Mr. Zelif.
Present.
Okay, so I'm the presentation. We have three presentations tonight and I believe you've presented before to us, Mr. DePattis. You're gonna talk to us about your findings for our audit this year.
Yes, I believe that you have each gotten a copy of our financial executive summary. I'm not gonna take too much of your time tonight. Overall, the audit was pretty good. We issued an unmodified opinion. That means that the numbers are fairly stated. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the control structure in the business office of the district. So if you open right up to page one there, we've got a general fund balance sheet comparing where the district ended in 2022 compared to a year ago at the end of 2021. And the main number anybody really would want to know on there is the total fund balance near the bottom right-hand corner increased by $1.1 million over the course of the fiscal year. So that's good. Obviously, it beats eroding fund balance, so that's a good thing. But a total increase of about $1.1 million. I do just want to note that the district is again over the 4% allowed on the signed fund balance under property tax law. It's 4.74%, so a little bit over that 4% this year as the district was a year ago also. I just want to mention that. I wouldn't be too concerned about it if I was in your position, but you know, we do have to point that out. If you flip over to page two in there, you'll see that the district did put a million dollars of that increase in fund balance into the capital reserve. So that capital reserve is now up to just under $1.9 million. District has a total of $5.9 million in reserves at the end of the year. You know, and a nice spread of reserves, you know, not all stuck in one place. There's a little bit of variety in those reserves and accessible reserves that the district can utilize moving forward if need be with if things come up through the budgeting process. And I do just want to note on the debt reserve there, because that's one we don't usually see a lot of activity in. But those are just some funds that came in as a result of bonding the bus purchases from the previous years. That the district really, there was a little bit of excess money there and a premium was received. The district can't do anything else with that money, so that's why you see that those funds going into the debt service reserve on the bottom of the page there. The next couple of pages, I don't really have too much to comment on. It's looking at the budget. First, the revenue side. District came in $150,000 over on the revenue budget. That's really pretty good. It comes in, comes out to about 0.76%, so you know, less than 1% there. I think that's really pretty good budgeting on the revenue side. And on page four, it looks at the expense side of the budget. And that's where that savings or that increase in fund balance was really generated. The district came in about $1.8 million under budget, which is about eight and a half percent, which is still pretty, in a pretty good range, I think. You know, it's a little, it's a little bit closer than last year as things were, you know, mostly back to out of COVID world for the most part operationally. And then there was also an increase in some of the stimulus funding that the district received where some of those expenses were moved over to the special aid fund. We'll see if you flip over to the next page. This is really a quick, high-level overview of those other operating funds. We don't get into as much detail here because these funds on page five really are for a very specific purpose. The district receives money, spends money for those purposes and really over the long run, run close to break even. Do just want to point out here again, the school lunch fund had really, a really nice operating surplus. But that does then again create an issue with the federal regulations that have a guideline on how much fund balance should be in the food service fund. So the food service fund is in excess of that fund balance as well. That's really pretty common across all the districts that we work with. About 90% of the districts that we work with are in that situation. But that's mostly just driven by two and a half years of fully reimbursed meals. So that went away this year. Keep an eye on those operations as the district goes through 22, 23. But again, I just want to point that out because it is the federal regulations and guidelines there. Other than that, you know, the special aid fund, you can see last year the district had about $480,000 in revenues and expenses. This year, that number was up to just over $1.85 million. So that's where the stimulus funding that the district is receiving is being recorded and spent. So you can see a really pretty large increase over there. So that's another contributor to a little bit of the surplus in the general fund. And then in the capital projects fund, spent about $12 million, almost all related to the 2020 capital project. That's up to, the district has now spent 13.1 million out of the $15.3 million project that's authorized. So that'll be wrapping up here in the near future hopefully. The last page, page six, we don't usually talk about too much. This is the district-wide statement if we take all of those operating funds and put them into a single column with the long-term assets, long-term liabilities of the district. Like a corporate-style financial statement, there's only two numbers I kind of want to highlight on here tonight. Number one being the unrestricted net position near the bottom of the page. You see that $2.7 million that's in brackets. That indicates it's a deficit on restricted net position. That's a result of the district's retiree health insurance. Every year, the district hires an actuary to perform a calculation and has to book a liability for that. But there's no legal authority to fund that liability in New York State, so that creates this deficit. But really, this year, the district's liability was $5 million, which is, you know, roughly, roughly 20% of the budget on the annual basis. So I think that's a really good liability compared to some of the other districts in the area that you may see. And the last thing I just wanted to mention on here is if you look near the top in the asset section, there's a line that says net pension asset of $7.2 million. That's the district's proportionate share of the state pension systems. It's not a real asset that the district's really ever gonna receive or be able to use. However, accounting standards require the district to recognize a proportionate share of the state pension systems. And both the ERS and TRS were overfunded this year. So I just wanted to mention that because if you look back at last year's financial statements, you're not gonna see an asset there. And this year, there's $7.2 million, which is a pretty big asset. So I just want to mention that that's what that is in case you get any questions or if you're comparing and you say, where did this asset come from? It's just an accounting number that has to be recorded. I know that was a really quick overview of the financial statements and operations. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there anything unique about our district versus other districts that you review within our numbers, good or bad, anything that you look at?
I don't think anything unique. I think that the district, I mentioned when I was talking about the Oak Path retiree health liability. I think $5 million is a pretty, is a pretty good number. I mentioned that it's about 20% of your general fund budget, which is how I compare one district to another district to another district, just to get a benchmark. And that's really on the low end of that spectrum, so I think that that's, that's a positive. And then I also mentioned the variety of reserves that the district has. You know, I don't think that it's, it's a, you know, just under $6 million, I don't think is an overabundance of reserves. But I think it puts the district in a pretty strong financial position for whatever may be coming a couple of years down the road when the stimulus funding runs out.
Thanks, Blake.
Well, thank you for your time. Thanks, Blake. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Sue and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and talk to you a little bit about the community center and the food pantry that is operating down on the goose now. It's sponsored by the Warrior House of Western New York. It started back in 2018. We were seeing some food insecurities in our district and we really started small. We were servicing maybe seven to 10 families. We were operating out of small closet in the elementary school, but things have come a long way since then.
So hangry. I'm sure we've all experienced it, right? As an informal adjective, bad-tempered or irritable as a result of hunger. So I think Snickers kind of snorted the hangry word. But what does that look like within our school?
And we think the perfect person to tell us.
Oh, can you go? Thank you. Sorry about that.
A lot of the times when I was dealing with students that had some discipline issues, they were hungry. And so I quickly identified that they were coming to school hungry, they were leaving school hungry. When they were hungry, they weren't performing, they didn't have the right mindset to be in an academic setting. So I started bringing food to students in school. They'd come down and get snacks, eventually above two bags of groceries. Through some research, we were able to find Food Link and quickly found out that that's exactly what we needed for our community. Being able to provide the proteins for our families and really focused on a well-balanced meal. When we do food drives, they're amazing and we have great community support, but we don't always have that balance of the nutritional needs that they are, kiddos really thrive on. So Food Link's been able to provide that for our families. One family in mind that she joined our food pantry in the fall. She has, she'd been laid off. She, she, her husband had lost his job and they are raising their grandchildren. And she was just terrified with holidays coming, how they were going to be able to do anything. So when I got her to come into the food pantry, she was blown away at how much we had to offer. And like we talked about the balance and making, you know, dairy. When she saw that we had milk, she started crying. And so I get emotional for that. There were some kiddos that just were really angry and they didn't want to come to school and work for school. They were just here. The behaviors were much more concerning than they should have been, so the academics weren't taking place. Once we were able to identify that they had a basic need that was not being met and we could provide that need and it was just food, they changed their attitudes. They became willing to work for us. They trusted us. We built really nice partnerships and relationships with the family and the students and their academics started to soar. We are a little over 50% free and reduced lunch. We are a community that has had a lot of factories just die out, so we don't have the jobs available between Buffalo and Rochester. But a lot of the time, transportation's an issue. So our, our community does struggle to be able to walk to decent stores. You know, we don't have big supermarkets in Oakfield, so this is really fun where they get their, their main source of food. I think that the, the community has changed since I was a kid here and they, they know. They know when they, they need food, they know when food is low and they have, have learned to ration out food, so they don't overindulge. And that's something that you'll see when you walk through. We have a shared table that we try to support so kids can, you know, leave things that they aren't gonna eat in their lunch or take things if they're hungry throughout the day. And, and you'll see kids at the end of the day looking to see if there's anything left in those baskets to take home. And it's always for another family member, it's never for themselves. And I think unfortunately, sometimes it's their normal, that's all they've known. And they don't know that it's, it's not normal to have cupboards full of food. So they don't know how to communicate that need. It's just something that they're aware of. And so through the Food Link support, we're able to fill those cupboards, so that's not something that they're struggling with.
So that's what's happening three years ago within our building. That's what Lynn was seeing, that's what I saw as a substitute, that's what Melissa saw as a PT. And so our end goal was to combat that to the best of our abilities. And I think that we have done an amazing job. And these little kiddos are first graders in our first year and they all brought us macaroni and cheese. And that is one of our big things is to make sure that our young, our youth within this building are aware of their responsibility to our community. Quiet there.
So during, throughout this whole COVID timeframe and even now after, I mean, I think we've all seen the impacts of COVID. You know, we're struggling to find food on the shelves. COVID became a big thing in our pantry. We've definitely seen more need. Our numbers have continued to grow and we're trying to change along with that.
So what did COVID change? What did COVID-19 change for us? It changed everything. And what does that mean for our community? It means everything. We went from a closet that doesn't even exist in the building anymore to a 6,000-square-foot building that is a lot of fun. But we were able to secure a permanent location where we can help the whole community. And realistically, we knew, we knew that this need was greater than the seven to 10 families we were servicing within our building. But in 2019, 18, 19, we serviced nine households, 44 people, 34 kids. Today, 114 households in the month of October, 350 people, 97 of them are children. That's what our month looks like. That's a lot of people in a little community.
We've also tried to reach out beyond just the food pantry to help support the students in our school. So we did, we've worked with the school district to help provide kids who maybe don't have the means to get the back-to-school supplies, what they need to be successful in school. So we were able to complete 67 backpacks for those students this year. We also typically do a back-to-school clothing drive and shopping event for our families and winter attire. You know, hats, gloves, coats, all that stuff. And 20 families came and attended that event this year. We also, we've partnered with, so we're partnered with Food Link, but we also have partnered with Target, who provides us with some donations on a weekly basis. Now, those donations could be any type of food, but we try to pass some of the kid-friendly granola bar snacks through our school district to, number one, help the teachers. Because a lot of teachers were purchasing their own snacks for kids who maybe couldn't bring in their own. And also, so we're doing that in the elementary school. We also have snacks that we provide to the school nurse up here when kids come in and say, you know, I'm not feeling good. And maybe it's because they haven't eaten breakfast or, you know, didn't have enough for lunch or whatever and they're not feeling well. So Target, who's, as well as Food Link, has helped us to do that for the district.
So along with our school, we, it's very important to us that we support community. We originated on Veterans, so Veterans Day is very important to us for three years. We just did our third Veterans Day coffee and donuts. And again, with the collaboration of the school, all these beautiful creations came from our elementary kiddos. And they showed up to say, hey, thank you. And that's important for us that, again, our kids know that their freedom didn't come free. And again, we have responsibilities to our community. This Thanksgiving, we have over 50 meals that have been requested. For Thanksgiving Day, we are working with our FFA, National Honor Society kiddos will come in and they will help serve, they'll help set up. Christmas, we have been, I made contact with five of our local churches and I've got in close to 30 of our kids sponsored for our Elf Help, is I think what we called it. And it's something they want, something to read, something to wear and something they need. And these, these churches, they're eager, they, how can we help? And so it's through our connection with the schools that the community's actually acting as a whole. So why is our partnership with you important to us? Can you mute that, please?
That's muted, yeah.
It is muted?
Wait, what?
Yeah, go ahead. What is it?
What's your favorite food ever? This is tough. Salad, mac and cheese.
Pancakes.
And popcorn.
My dad's steak.
Pizza, so good.
What food do you dislike most?
I hate cheese.
Veggie chips.
Spinach.
Tomatoes.
What's a face you make when you eat radish?
I don't eat it at all.
What do you do when someone gives you food you don't like?
Play with it until it got cold.
I'll sing.
Hamster style, they look that way?
Right, because if it was gross, why would I wanna eat it?
Didn't you know that one out of every five kids doesn't have enough food to eat?
One out of five, one out of three, five kids.
Can you turn the bag around and look at the other side?
Oh.
I didn't know it was in America.
I don't know what to say there.
I feel bad.
I could be wanting to cry.
Wow.
That's a lot of kids.
It's kind of unfair because some people have too much stuff and some people have too little.
For me, I always miss too much. And if that's a meal that I'm missing, I would feel very disappointed.
Makes me feel like, what are we gonna do to fix this?
What is something we can do to help fight hunger together?
So over there, we have a wall with tons of ideas and we wanna add your idea to the wall.
Kids could think, oh, that's not possible or, oh, I'm too young to do this. But it is possible and you're not too young to do it.
Donate money as much as I can.
Make, make, give money.
We should all get a group and try to find the foods that would be easiest to give.
And we can take the food to homes where they don't have food.
That's a small way to have a big impact.
Post videos about children not being able to eat.
Everyone brings canned food and they build a big fort and then they donate all the canned food.
And then they have everything for free.
If there was some machine that could make food, my machine would change it to five kids being hungry.
The tiniest ripples make the biggest waves. If all the kids in the world got together and did something big, they could impact the whole world.
So why is our partnership with you important to us? Because Monday through Friday, you've opened the door to change, the possibility of change, and that is our duty. And they're not gonna know the change that has to be made, can be made, that they can make if we don't educate them. How about give up?
Over there, okay? The right there, okay?
So this is just, these are just some pictures of different groups that have been coming in and helping us with what we're trying to do. We have some kids out here on Veterans Day. We have.
Who's that, Middle High?
Middle High School. Student council came in and donated some food. The, this is Kelsey's Christmas event that she had the help of the student council with. And we also have the girls' basketball team that helped us move all of the food when we moved into our new location. So it's just very important to us, the partnership that we have with the school district, you know, supporting us and getting kids out there and trying to make a difference in people's lives.
So together, we think we're great. And these are just some of the local communities and organizations that we have already been able to work with. Obviously, the school district and all of our, and most of our leadership teams. Elementary Student Council, Middle High School Student Council, High School Student Council, Honor Society, Living Skills, I apologize if that's not the right name. FFA, our, our sports teams come in. I mentioned that we're working with the churches to get Christmas for our kiddos. Our local businesses. Alabama Hotel has been amazing to our food pantry and that's just one of many. The Town in the Village, Betterment, the PTO, the Lions Club. Like, there's not, I can't think of one organization in this county or in this town that's not supporting us and that's why we're great. And together, we're great. And that's why it's important for us that we have that support because we're just two people. We do the work of the law, but we're just two people. And if it wasn't for the people that supported us within our communities, you know, then we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So that's where the goose came into play. God's on our side every day. It's, I know a lot of people think it's because it used to be yellow geese, but it's not. And that's important to us. Like, it's important to us that in today's world, we just, we just know that our choices matter. That's the long and short of it. And because we learned, being in the school, about our food insecurity, we wanted you to know everything we knew. So we appreciate your time and listening and watching our videos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is tough work. Hard work is exhausting, I think. And it's not always as fulfilling as you might want it to be. I think there's fits and starts, but you guys have kind of made it through, I think, that hard part and you have something really great established. And it's, it's a pretty cool thing. I mean, my, my kids are at Bingo tonight in their pajamas. My, my kids are at Bingo tonight in their pajamas. Loving life because of what you've got going on there. So I, I'm very appreciative of what you're doing for our, our kids in the school district right now. He's a lot. I had a kid growl at me today and throw pencils. And I said to her, "Well, young lady, that's not the best behavior that you can demonstrate right now. What, what can I do for you?" And she said, "Well, I'm angry." "I'm serious, see?" And I said, "Well, ignore the snacks, Sarah. All you have to do is ask." And, "Or not, just get 'em." And it changed her day. And that's just a small micro positive for what, you know, what you're doing there. So thank you again. Really grateful, appreciate it.
Sue, I have to say, and Melissa, when I came here, you know, four years ago, I do remember the little tiny closet at the elementary.
We fought for that closet.
What's that?
We fought for every inch of that closet.
You know, when I, when I toured the facilities and I said to Lynn, you know, "What is that closet for?" And she said, you know, "That's, you know, that's our food pantry. That's where we store food." I, you know, it was just kind of like, "Oh, okay." And seeing what you have accomplished now with, with the goose and that building and everything that you've gone through, and even during COVID, it amazes me the amount of support you have for not only our district, but our, our students and families. And I'm tearing up right now because it's, uh, it's amazing. Your stat where you had serviced nine families, you know, four years ago, and through COVID and just even the hard times now, you're servicing over 300 families. It's just amazing. And the amount of emails that I see that, you know, Melissa will come in and drop off stuff for, you know, the kindergarten classes and the amount of food that you're able to give to us. You're making a difference. You probably won't hear that, but you're making a difference. And for me, it's, it's just, it's just incredible. And, you know, thank you from the district side of things for everything that the two of you do and the community does for, for our district.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. Okay, if you get out before 7:30, come on down to Bingo.
That's up to Justin. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Is it Connie? Where's Connie? Connie, is this you?
Yep.
And that?
So the board asked if we would share the state's spring testing results. So that's what we're going to do tonight. What we've done for you is kind of color-coded things so you have a sense of where we stand within the region. So things that you see that are in green, we are at or above the GV region. Things that are in red, we're below the GV region. The state has not, well, they have released, it's like, I think, a 5,000-page document or more, individual state results for like 3 ELA, 3 math, or science. What they've done instead, and you may have seen if you looked ahead of time, they took the aggregate 3 through 8 state results. So as we go through, you'll see GV region for all the individual tests, and then there's an aggregate 3 through 8 result for our district that we can compare to GV and we can compare to the state. So we're going to start in elementary. So here's grade 3. And remember, this is last year, grade 3, so this is our cohort of 4th graders this year. So you'll see that we are at or above the state average in ELA and math. GV region, thank you. Grade 4, this is this year's cohort of 5th graders. This cohort, for both, we're below the GV region, just a couple of percentage points there in ELA and a little bit more significant amount in math. Grade 5, so this year's new middle schoolers. We were above in ELA and above in math by a decent margin. 6th grade, so this year's 7th graders. Again, we were above in both ELA and in math. 7th grade, again, above in both. Not quite as big a gap in math there, but... 8th grade, so this is this year's freshman class. We were below by a little bit with our ELA, and we were above in math again. So this is the state comparison, and this is the only public-facing data that they have right now just compared to the state. So they took the 3 through 8 aggregate data for the districts, or we took it for the district, but they did 3 through aggregate for the state. So we're right at the state level for ELA, and we're above the state level for math. And again, we don't have the individual test scores to compare to the state level at this point. So that's what our 3 through 8 math and ELA look like. Knowing this coming spring, this is our first year of the full implementation of Next Gen standards, the 3 through 8 math and ELA exams in the spring will be new assessments. They won't follow the same format. They'll be all aligned to the Next Gen learning standards that the state put out. Science, so testing in 4th and 8th grade, so this year's 5th and 9th graders. 90% for 4th grades, so we're above the GV region there. 8th grade, we're a little bit below. You'll notice that the GV region was below the 8th grade as well. They just didn't perform as well. The thing to just kind of note here, there is no more 4th grade science test. So this year, elementary, there is no science test at all. Next spring, it moves to 5th grade. So it will be fully aligned with the Next Generation standards, and it will be a 5th grade exam. 8th grade, they're still having the 8th grade assessment this year. So that's going to be the same old, nothing will change. Next year will be the new 8th grade, based on the new learning standards. So they're, they're doing the elementary a little bit different than the secondary. So there's our science. Regions, put the same kind of color coding for their region scores. Our four core science classes, green, so they're all at or above our GV region. Social studies, if you recall, U.S. history was not administered. It was not administered in August. It was not administered, will not be administered this January. It will not be administered until this coming June, and I believe it's June 1st. So there's no data anywhere for that. Global, we were above. Math, a little bit mixed results. So our core algebra, that's what our students need when they're trying to graduate with a region's diploma. We were all set there. Algebra II, a little bit below. That's our more advanced kids usually. And geometry, we were above as well. English, a little bit above the region there. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, great job. I think this is very encouraging in the direction we're heading. As far as when you go through these county, how do you, when you make, when you look at that, just that straight comparison from Ofield to the region, do you do a gap analysis in any way where you're saying, "Okay, I'm looking at the 3rd grade tests, and in this standard, there is a deficit between our district and the rest of the region"?
There's not a gap analysis between the regions. You can do that, like, scores on the tests. I can compare district to district, 30 LA to 30 LA. Like, so I could compare us to Kelmom, I could compare us to, you know, Pembroke. But the gap analysis is individual to the district, so I don't have that information for other districts. Did I answer your question?
Well, yeah, but, so, we do I-Ready, and that prints out all sources, statistics, and data, right? But this also is going to give us a direction of where we fall on a certain, on ELA or math. And we can determine where we, we per se are in development in a standard. And then how can we turn that deficit, maybe in a standard, to a goal or a direction that we're going to move within our ELA departments or our math departments? Because I, I love that, the I-Ready, that's great. But like, these are another thing that are going to dictate success and, and help us provide direction. If we're going to spend the time to give them, we should glean something out of them other than, "Hey, we are green or red. How can we use these to drive instruction more?"
So actually, one of the pieces in this piece comes from the state. So any student scoring a 1 on a state assessment or a 2 below a certain threshold, so not all 2s are considered for intervention per the state. Yeah, our district, we consider them, but if we're following the state guidelines. So what we, as a district, had to do, again, first time this happening since my tenure here, is look at those scores. So we sat down with the interventionists in both buildings, because, remember, this is through 8th grade, and said, "Okay, let's take a look at all our test scores, and let's look at how they did on their previous spring benchmark assessments. Let's take a look at how they're doing on the fall." And then the assess, or the interventionists picked other assessments that they felt were a good measure of a student's ability in reading, a good measure of a student's ability in math. So there were multiple data points that we look at for each individual student to determine the intervention. And then overall, as a district, Lynn and I look at a lot, the I-Ready, and where's the trends? And if you, you're familiar with I-Ready at all, it, it gives you overall areas. Phonics, phoneme awareness, vocabulary, and then you can break it down farther. Our literacy team also looks at some of this information, and that's how that we set goals.
So how is, how do you get buy-in from grade levels? So like, when you send back this data to the grades, which I'm assuming you do, they've got to look back at their tests at some point and say, "Well, where, what is it that, you know, is, is, is difficult for the students that are in front of me?"
So gap analysis is done, I'll let you talk to it in a second too, just so you know, our math team and our ELA team, they do look at some of that specific data. And I know Kristen Lecker, our math chair, has come in before and shared. That's, I mean, K through, well, they look at data from kindergarten, but the state assessment data, 3 through 8, and they look and see where our kids are doing well with standards, where they're not, so they can figure out where those gaps are. And that's something internally the teachers do naturally. It's part of, kind of, their desire to get better.
That's what I was going to talk about.
Yeah, I don't need to be needle-y, Connie. I'm just trying, I, I, I'm not at all trying to do that. I'm just, these, these should help us to...
Yep. Our teachers naturally, I mean, that's what they're looking for.
They do produce. And we have printed and shared with the department chairs here in this building the item analysis for each test. And what we're starting is the process now by, what does that data say? What does it say to the standards we currently prioritize? What action can we take to increase student achievement in the future? That's a step that we're just starting now. But I asked the department chairs to look at the data, look at the item analysis, and ask themselves, what can we do in the short term for this, June? Really, in the long-term development process where we look at these assessments each and every year, and how we stack up. So it's a new process, but we're starting it, and I'm excited to see where it takes us.
And part of the data analysis that Lecker, Lit team, and math team are doing, they're also cross-referencing our resources and vetting which resources are helping to support that standard and that lesson in the classroom. So it, it's not something that every grade level dives into. We've been relying more heavily in my building on my leadership of the math team or Lit team representative, and then trying to have those collaborative conversations during superintendent conference days and their half-day planning times so that they can share out as a team and then turnkey it back to their grade levels.
It might be beneficial, you know, to see, maybe possibly trends from 3 through 8, and you might step back and say, "Holy cow." Main idea is just, we're getting crushed, 3 through 8.
That's exactly what they do.
And then how can I, how can I then make sure that this is a focus K8, and then make that consistent? And that's kind of where I'm, where I'm getting at.
And that's where...
And that's kind of driving what, like, Kristen's book study is on after she does the gap analysis, and she does have the view K8 as her position, because she runs both teams. And same with the, the literacy team. They decided the writing scores and our writing overall, not just this point, not just the I-Ready, but their internal and their own summative informative assessments, they're compiling those conversations, that data, to have these conversations.
It can be a powerful exercise, though, to see the variance between your grade level scores and the rest of the region's scores. I've been doing that for, yeah, many, many years. And you can see your growths and your blows, and then work and you focus in on to make sure that you are not missing the target.
Yeah. And these conversations will continue to evolve knowing that these tests are coming back full force. You know, with COVID, we've been doing day ones. We haven't done day twos. We haven't really spent a lot of time just in the nature of that. So those are conversations that you'll see resurfacing in a slow and steady pace. You know, I don't want to, to have teachers take, you know, and feel upset about a test score when it's only one data point we presented tonight, because our kiddos, we look at a holistic approach and multiple data points when we're coming up with the best programs and the best curriculum for our students. So these conversations will continue to evolve, but...
There was some data, because, I mean, even though, when we compare us to the region, we, we look pretty healthy. Still, some of the numbers, we don't feel as comfortable about, right? We look at the numbers, but if you look at the raw number, like, oof, that, we should be better. And one of the things I noticed, kind of diving into some of the data from the state, and then, like I said, the interventionist sat down to come up with these additional data points to determine where our kids need support. We actually have a pretty decent amount of kids who scored very poorly on these tests, and all of our other benchmark assessments or other screeners, they're doing fine. So, you know, do they not test well? You know, we, so some of those things, we're not really sure what's going on. And those are the things we have to parse out. Like Lynn said, we can't just look at the state test score. We've got to look at these other measures and count on our teachers to look at those gaps and see where they need to modify.
Nice, though, we're better than everybody else in these state assessments. I would like to see...
I know, it makes you feel, but, but we would like to see that.
Yeah, and as long as we see this projecting outward, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I, those are...
And we know their face, you know, we'll talk more about the academic supports that we're offering. You know, Rob has been really good about the stylus, making sure we have a very good Chromebook and a very good stylus, because one of our math teachers will even say to you, if you're trying to do your work on a Chromebook and you have a really not a great stylus, sometimes you can't read what was written. You know, so could some of our scores have that effect that they're writing and they're trying to show work, and the 3rd graders, they already have horrible penmanship as it is? You know, so those are things that we're also having conversations about, really starting to practice the tools now. You know, not test prep, but, you know, showing those tools. And when they're doing warm-ups and they're doing their, you know, mini lessons, they're exposing them. Rob is getting us our stylus at our level two that are really high-end so that our kids can really use this as a tool and not a toy. So there's a lot of those steps too that we are taking as proactive measures to just to rule out that that side isn't going to hurt us at the end of the day, because these tests, unfortunately, paper copies are going away faster than you can believe. And we're at a luxury step that we've been...
That's the variable, right? Because you guys are ahead of the game, right? Like, I will scream and yell until we absolutely have to, because I still believe you're going to score better on paper than you are in math.
Right, and, and we don't disagree, but knowing that the state's district is a gap, we can't...
What you've taken on that is a long time ago.
We have to keep trucking forward. And so how can we do that? Well, we've got a really great tech guy who says, "This stylus is really helpful. Try it, practice it, do that." So those are conversations that we've also had after this result.
But that's variable, right? Like, that's another variable that has an impact on your overall.
Well, that's one thing we I and I ask it every year because I'm just curious. And I ask again this year since the tests are live, they're real now. At Bosse's, can you share our aggregate data of when we're comparing to this region? Who's CBT, computer-based test, and who's PBT, paper-based test?
They should be able to do that.
Won't do it.
They do in or they do it for us.
And, you know, they won't do it.
And then we get each score from every district around us.
Because I'd like to compare us to computer-based tests districts as opposed to paper-based districts. Because I agree with you, I I.
What's the difference? Why can't they just? That's crazy.
Right. So anyway, so just lots of variables. But overall, I mean, we're we're trucking forward.
Coming off of COVID and stuff and coming back for the first time with this test, our third graders, our our my fourth and fifth graders have never sat for a two-day test. So I think we are showing a lot of promise.
I'd like to see this as an annual report. I appreciate this, I know it's extra, but it it.
Yeah, if you could get us a copy of that, that would be, because we went through those pretty fast.
I think it was, wasn't it in the?
No.
Oh. Okay, I didn't know how presentation.
Carolyn, if you have this presentation, you can share with the board.
Yeah, okay, I will, yeah, apologies.
We'll get that to you.
Yep, that'd be great.
You know, I think it's also important to, year after year after year, not only do you just take a look at a specific grade level, but you actually follow the cohorts.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, the third-grade cohort is different than the fifth-grade cohort. So you're going to want to see how those kids in third-grade ELA, how proficient are they now in fourth-grade ELA, fifth-grade ELA? So there's, it's not only, you know, horizontal, but, you know, vertical as well. So you're going to want to.
Peak or valley somewhere.
Well, there is, right? Like, you might have a the a grade level that has many students with special needs in it. And that's going to have an impact on your results, right? And one way or the other.
But then you can compare that that group year in year. So you're comparing apples to apples.
Right, yeah, right.
Is participation getting better in those tests?
Yes, so, yes, really good participation.
I think the aptitude might be over, hoping.
Okay.
We didn't, I don't think I had any in my building.
I was going to say, we had less than one hand, I think, in the district.
Good. We'll honor the days hopefully of the auditorium being filled. That was, that was a swell, I hear that, like, oh, oh.
The one thing that jumped, so I think it was the fourth grade looked like that kind of jumped out to me. So is that the group ahead of our, when we started the new reading program?
They are the tail end of the shifts that we are making.
Correct.
So do you think there was something lost there with them? Or what is that grade typically not scored well?
Um, well, it's hard to say that they haven't typically scored well. But I do think that the curriculum and the shifts that we made are going to help out. I think that if you look at my son's grade, that was the group that always had the the other curriculum were used, and they have different deficits than this grade, you know, current does. So those are conversations that we've had with like Gretchen and Krista, who are the reading specialists over here. You know, you can tell by their assessments now how our program is really functioning and working for them. So I do think that that will also help.
So, so now, we've seen that, we can kind of focus on that group of kids.
Yep, yes, that's a good one to track.
Thank you. I hope you don't feel like we put you on the spot. We do appreciate it all.
This is a sensitive conversation for teachers sometimes. So I don't want people to feel like we're ever attacking them or that somebody didn't score the way that we should have. You know, we really want them to feel supported. And they work so hard and so tirelessly for our kiddos and our community. And so when you just look at a quick number, I don't want that to be the end-all, be-all judge of them because I know that they pour their heart and soul into their job every single day.
And I don't think we're making that judgment. I think it's part of the whole that we're looking at. You're going to present us with I ready information later on in this year, more than likely like you did last year. We talked about the RTI supports, we're talking about the new curriculum. It all kind of melts together. This is just one of those pieces. It's an important piece.
It is.
It's an indicator of success or not success within the district. And any way you shake it, if you do well, you feel good. And if you don't, you feel bad, and it's personal if you're in the classroom.
It is, and I just want to, yeah.
I I I.
I had to put that up there.
I lived it, but you work hard.
I do.
To 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 make the improvements that we need to make. And you guys are doing a great job, and the teachers are as well.
Very receptive of of opportunities to grow and evolve, so that's all I can ask of them.
I think also the district that stayed open through COVID, more so than surrounding districts, seeing this data, you know, that they were hopeful that COVID impacted, you know, the kids within our walls a little less than maybe some of the neighboring districts. And, you know, seeing some of this data, you know, some of that shows hopefully that that was the case, that, you know, that we did excel through COVID, maybe more so than some of the neighboring districts.
It does.
Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. Yeah, we'll get we'll get those numbers out to you.
Do you want to put copies or email?
Or email.
Our copies are shared slides.
Email's fine.
I can print them off.
No.
Okay, and the minutes, be it resolved that the minutes of the October eighteen, twenty twenty-two regular meeting be approved. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Visitor request, Carolyn?
I have received them.
No visitor request, okay. Approval of warrants? Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims, audit reports be approved? Can I get a motion?
Move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Treasurer's reports. Be it resolved that the following treasurer's reports be approved as recommended by the business administrator? Can I get a motion?
Move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. John, second reading here, seventy-three fifty.
Yeah, this is the second reading for the Board of Policy seventy-three fifty, corporal punishment and emergency interventions that are recommended. Like I said, this is an update, given given the fact that we do have a a new class here that the district is embarking upon and the need possibly to intervene in in different ways, using some, you know, TCI that, you know, specific administrators and school employees have been trained upon. It just extends our policy and liability to cover, you know, some of those unfortunate situations that may occur throughout the school year. So it's just it's just an update, updated policy. I don't I don't believe there were any recommendations or requests from last last month, but.
Michelle, aides in there, how how are they, are they aware, like, how are they trained before they enter there? I hate to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to think of the whole picture.
We did a training, Lynn and I, over the summer. Once we selected the aides that would be working in that classroom specifically, as well as the counselors and the classroom teacher, and did a very informal overview of TCI and what it is and how to be proactive, what type of language to use, how to set up your environment, understanding the stress model, understanding the pyramid that I shared last week of different types of interventions to you. So we gave them a good foundation of those interventions and ways they can be proactive without having to go into that physical training or anything like that. So that's what they've been provided prior to entering the classroom.
So now that they've been in for ten weeks, is there a revisiting possibly of that? And I know that doesn't necessarily go along with this policy, but I feel like it kind of does. Is there like a revisiting perhaps of like, how are we feeling, where are we at?
Yeah, so having the behavior specialist now, she works very closely with that classroom, and she's actually a trainer in TCI. So a lot of what's happening now is in the moment. And as they're working with the kids, she's walking them through things. They'll have, they have time at the end of the day, from two-thirty to three-thirty to reconvene as a team. And they sit and they talk through the day and debrief, and she provides some training in how to intervene with the students most safely and then talks about other interventions and supports.
We have bigger maps that we're able to kind of use as a shield to kind of maneuver. So there isn't as much hands-on as I think people assume because we have a lot of the resources available to make it as safe as possible for all involved.
That sounds like really, I love the two-thirty to three-thirty time for debrief because a lot of stuff can happen right from the start to that point.
Yeah, and in the moment, oftentimes, it's not time to talk about it.
No, you're not going to be able to sit down and say, so, Nancy, what do you think we should do?
The system is very fast-paced, so, yeah, having that timeframe is huge.
And and the reason for this policy is we want the board and and the community and and people to understand that, you know, anytime such an emergency intervention is used, we we have a, we have a protocol. As you turned, if you take a look at the second page there, it's all documented. People are aware of the incident. You know, the families are aware of the incident. I would be aware of the incident. We, you know, we document these things right down to, you know, the intervention used, the duration of it, and and all of that. So that's what's covering us is that it 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 holds us liable to making sure that we have all of this documentation. And again, this is kind of in conjunction with a corporal punishment policy, which I do have to sign off every year that we don't use corporal punishment. And again, this is not a punishment per se, but they're throwing in this emergency interventions into this policy because, you know, certainly, you know, obviously, you don't want anybody touching a kid. But, you know, given the fact that there are situations that we may have to have some emergency interventions, they kind of put this in the same policy. But understand that there is a specific protocol procedure and outline of of what we need to do and how to document it in case something like that ever happens. So that's that's really what this policy update is because we currently don't have that. So it's more of a protection for the district and and for the board to understand that we would have all of this, you know, documented and and everybody would be communicated with.
And right now, we're doing monthly behavior readings. So we're coming together as a group with the counselors, school psychologists, principals, and behavior specialists in looking at the data. And then there's a quarterly oversight to looking at any of these interventions if we need to use them. At this point in the year, I have not seen a situation in which I even think that we need to implement anything. But making sure we're having that oversight to see if there's trends in certain staff using it, certain lengths of time we're using it, a certain type of intervention that we're using. So we're doing that quarterly in our, in addition to the behavior meetings monthly to look at the behavior data and see how we're using our proactive measures first.
I am having an issue with this. I mean, it seems like the procedure, it's more procedural than anything. And I love a good procedure, especially if you can use it to support ourselves in the process along with these students that are here. So I'd like to make a motion.
I can handle it. But make a motion to approve policy seventy-three fifty as written.
Thank you. I can get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff and Dan. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, thank you, Jack. No, can't be too. Okay, thank you, Michelle. So business administrator, that is you, Christine.
That is me. So obviously, you had our mic to box from Mangle Miss Grovar was here presenting on the financials and the results. On the agenda tonight, you're going to see the financials to be accepted, the approval of the corrective action plan and our response to that. You will also find the updated reserve plan document to approve. And let's see, budget tran, uh, the budget calendar, because here we go again, the budget. Starts, starting next month, we'll start meeting and and moving along. So that budget calendar is on there for your approval. I do have some budget transfers on there for approvals since, that have been conducted since July. And also, you're going to find on here retirement on the agenda. Our treasurer, Laian Ty, Ty, Laian Tyler, however, she has offered to stay forever and help me forever with whatever I want, forever. But given that, I've also given you each a copy of a proposal for some staffing adjustments in the business office. Given the retirement gives you an opportunity to kind of reevaluate job duties and and, you know, realign things and make some improvements where you, where we need to, so. Yeah, there's that.
So you're still keeping busy?
Huh?
You're still keeping busy.
You're funny. But, yeah. It's good, all in all.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
John?
I have some great news that everybody knows about, but I I need to restate it and and re-congratulate Connor Demoy and Logan Clark for their cross-country runs in states last Saturday. If you're not aware, Connor finished third and Logan finished thirty-ninth. Connor's run was the best finish OA has ever had in states at third place. So that's that's something to be celebrated. He is now going to run in the New York State Federation meet. Yeah, this come upcoming Saturday, which may change. But good luck to Connor. I know that he's going to make OA proud. And just just so you are aware, Connor is is only a junior and Logan is only a sophomore. So they are, they are breaking records, crushing it out there. And we still have another year with Connor and two more with Logan. So it's it's going to be, it's going to be great to see what they can accomplish, you know, going into next year and the year after. So just just awesome, they're just, they're dynamite. I want to congratulate our OAE Aggies football team on their sectional title last Saturday. They've now made it two in a row. And from the players to the coaching staff, obviously, we have, you know, some coaches here. This is a real special team. You know, we see these guys in the morning when they're walking in and, you know, the smiles on their faces. I will tell you why Aiden is not here. He came up to me and basically told me that he is in game mode, his mind is set. Of course, he also has basketball practice too, because he plays both sports. But these kids are focused and they're they're humble and they're hungry and they just, they're determined and they're working really hard. And I want to say that their next opponent is Randolph. And that game was supposed to be Saturday at four o'clock at Vendetta Stadium. I am hearing through the grapevine that tomorrow is probably going to change that to a game next Monday night at six PM in Brockport, where we played last Saturday, just due to the weather. Nothing official, but that's what a little birdie told me. So they were supposed to play Saturday at four o'clock, but I think with the weather coming up this weekend, they're changing the the Far West Regional venue. So as soon as we find out, we'll get that information out and the tickets and and all of that to the community so everybody knows. I would also like to thank Danielle Mylum and Roger Bolton. I know that Sue and Melissa mentioned something about Veterans Day. Danielle and Roger put together an outstanding Veterans Day, excuse me, tribute with their performing groups. The students were great, the video and the and the performances were outstanding. And they were shown at the Goose on Veterans Day. So when veterans came in for, you know, their coffee and donuts, that was playing on on a on a screen. And so it is still posted on our parent square. If you haven't had a chance to look at it and watch them, I did. It was absolutely fantastic. So you can still view that on our parent square app. And lastly, the admin team got together. And every year, school districts are required to have an early dismissal drill. It's my philosophy that we do that drill that also has a purpose for us, whether that be the day before a long weekend, the day before a vacation, maybe a day before some crazy weather popping in. So we decided that we would run an early dismissal drill this Friday. And we're going to release the middle high school students at one fifteen, the elementary at two fifteen. We do need to practice that. A parent square message went out this afternoon to alert families. And we're just going to run that this Friday, and we'll see how that goes. On the back end of things, we make sure that all our families are covered, you know, especially the elementary students when we're dismissing early. I had a couple of questions about, are you dropping them off at home or their emergency? Can you drop them off at their emergency? We won't be there, you know, is childcare still happening? Those types of things. And those are the things of why you run an early dismissal drill. God forbid we ever had to do that. It's nice to at least plan it so parents can prepare. So we're going to run it this Friday. That's all I have, all good news.
Thanks, John. Michelle?
So we recently finished up all of our social emotional learning screeners on our students. So what our next steps are is that next week, we're going to sit down as a team with the counselors, behavior specialists, school psychologists, Lynn, Matt, J.C. and I to look at the data there to see what any trends are and things like that, identify any students to see, you know, what groupings we can make, what types of skills we can work on in groups, and developing short-term groups, whether they're six weeks or eight weeks, and focusing in on any sort of executive functioning skills, looking at social skills, anxiety, and grouping kids together, focusing on those skills for short extensive time and measuring the data as we work with them to see if that's something we need to extend or something they're ready to move on to, something else, or they've done well and achieved their goals. So looking forward to having those meetings in the next week.
Thank you. Connie, is.
She got that.
Okay, and then J.C.?
Yeah, we have two, two things to share with you. One is our Genesee County Mental Health Satellite Office is up and running, full swing, one day a week. We're currently at ten students that we're servicing. It's a great benefit to have that partnership and collaboration with Genesee County Mental Health. We're very happy to have that running again. The second thing is we've reached out to Don Shonett. He will be coming out to the district December fifth through the seventh to complete a vulnerability assessment to see strengths and weaknesses.
Thanks, J.C. Lynn?
So part of the stimulus funds that we have to to spend is the learning loss bucket. My teachers got really creative and instead of saying we have tutoring before and after school, we dubbed and named it the Adventure Academy. There's different clubs that are being run, teachers that are working collaboratively together to service third, fourth, and fifth graders. They're working on enhancing their writing skills through newspaper. They are, you're using math in ways that they don't even realize they're doing math. There's a breakfast club, there's a crazy eights club. So our teachers really took the the lead and got really creative, and our kids are really enjoying these clubs. The first round is going to wrap up shortly, and then we have two additional sessions, one each trimester. And there's going to be additional clubs that are offered and then some clubs that will run again because they were so successful with different kiddos. So it's really fun to walk by and see the kids not realizing that they're learning and using math. that they're learning and using math skills that they say they hate so much. Um, and they're, the, I think the teachers are having just as much fun, so, we're excited.
Lynn, how do we, how do kids get involved in this, uh, in the adventure?
So, this is a hard copy of the PowerPoint that was shared out with all third, fourth, and fifth grade students, and then they had a Google form that they could say, "I'm interested in this, this, and this." From there, the teachers went through and said, "We can offer this to this group." Um, we had a couple groups that kind of went from being a one-day to a two-day, so that kids could be a multiple things, and we didn't have conflicts. So, if you were a math Olympian kid, you still could participate in the, the music group because she addit-, has additional time. So, there weren't any students that were turned away, which was really exciting, um, and it was all things that they felt they were interested in and drove their, um, discussions with parents, and then parents just had to say yes or no.
Awesome. I love it. I don't, where did you get this idea?
So, I kinda went back to challenging my group to say, "Remember when we used to synergize on six?" And we kind of came up with things that we enjoy as adults, and how can we foster that love of learning with our students? And that kind of really drove the force to talk about how can we work on reading skills, math skills, and writing skills. We also have some, you know, fine arts and music, um, so it really kind of encompassing things that all of our students can benefit from, and not focusing on just the tutoring aspect, where you narrow your focus down and the clientele that you're gonna serve us.
Great.
So...
That's, that's great.
We're loving it.
Ma'am?
Um, if all goes well with our planning, by this time next year, our students, uh, will have an opportunity before they graduate to earn a seal of civic readiness, which is, uh, through, uh, New York State, and what kids will have a chance to do is demonstrate their expertise in the area of civics and community involvement. Um, it, it's a, it involves a literal seal on their diploma, which I think would look good on any college application, but more importantly, it would connect the kid with the community. There would be some extra courses they'd be required to take, um, a project they'd be required to do to earn the seal of civic readiness. It puts them in touch directly with their community, uh, and they can really see how the things they're learning about in the classroom with civics and government apply to their own community. I think it is a heck of an opportunity. So, what the process will be planning, and actually, it will be tomorrow with the teachers, um, and see what we can do to plan it at our end. I have some templates from some schools that have used this model, and they already have it in their school. And then, the idea is to apply through the state and have it in place, ready to go for next year.
And that would be offered?
Kids would actually begin this process in middle school.
Yeah.
Because there's a series of things they have to check off, take a certain series of classes, and so we would really begin this with our middle school students to earn this as they progress through their time here.
Where do you see it getting snuck in? That would be part of that?
It's courses that we already offer, so there'd be nothing new that they'd have to do, is they'd just have to really take a sequence of courses. So, now you're encouraging students who might not otherwise wanna take an AP course, but to sign up for it, because it's part of the process and a, and criteria for this.
Ah, that's cool. Thank you. Uh, Rob?
Well, a couple weeks ago, we had interviews to replace, uh, our retired Rich Anderson, after being here for, uh, over a decade. And I was pleased to say that in the back row right now, we have our candidate, and that is Alex. Alex is a graduate of Oakfield, class of Alabama six, and, uh, lives in the neighborhood. So, I think he brings a skillset and, uh, the experience that we need to the position that, uh, that fills some big shoes that the, uh, Rich has to climb.
Thank you. We'll welcome you later. And then, Wendy?
Um, so, the Oakfield Alabama Teachers Association is busy each month. Um, we have a meeting in the elementary on the first Wednesday of every month. We have a meeting in the middle high school on the second Wednesday of every month, um, in order to have our executive team members meet with our, our unit members to, uh, address any concerns that they may have, open lines of communication, um, and then we can use that to help foster our discussions, um, within, uh, concerns with the administration, um, with the district, um, within ourselves and all of that. Um, our executive team also meets monthly. Our building reps meet with each of the principals monthly. So, we, we have a lot of meetings going on, but it's, it's all in the name of making sure that we have open lines of communication, so we can work towards, um, bettering everything for our students, for our members, for our district, and all of that. Um, we also have our, uh, Positive Action Committee working, um, again this year, uh, trying to build, um, community activities that we can, we can get going again. Um, we actually already talked to Sue about doing a food drive in the spring, um, because we know that the student council's currently doing one now. We wanna make sure that that keeps going throughout the year. Um, we'd like to do another faculty basketball game where we can raise money and then give that to, um, local groups that are in need and stuff like that. So, we're working on just trying to unify ourselves and, and be better within the district for our kids and for, for you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ericman. Um, I received an email from Deb Sizerow that she wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. She had a meeting with transportation department, so, um, we'll hear from her, uh, possibly next month. Aiden is, um...
Off the record, he told me everything was good. I said, "What do you want me to say?" He's like, "Tell them everything's good."
We'll take that, I guess. Um, on the new business, uh, be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point nine be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Thanks, ma'am. All right, I got you a second.
Sure.
And, uh, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes. Okay, communications. Uh, any communications, Kyle?
The only one I have for the board under nine point two, um, Matthew Peters said our middle high school principal is up for tenure in January, as per the board request. I'm giving you a notification now. I've included a letter along with his prior evaluations for board review. Um, due to the nature of when he would be, uh, tenured in January, the board would have to, um, vote on this next month, uh, in, at the December meeting.
Uh, thanks for the information, John.
Yep.
Um, and to, uh, I don't believe we had a discussion tonight, uh, for roundtable, uh, personnel. Be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven ten be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
It's a move.
Second?
Sir.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes. Oh, thanks, Jackie. Uh, motion passes. Got the Oscar there, Jackie. Um, all right.
Mr. Stotter.
Yep, the rest of the stuff, uh, eleven, eleven, be it resolved, um, that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Morgan Zipperoli. Uh, Zipper, I'm sorry, I butchered that. Zip, Zip, Zipperoli. Did I get that? Zipperoli, I apologize, Morgan. Uh, effective November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Um, we have another resignation here. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts a resignation of Nicholas Buckinger, effective November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Uh, eleven thirteen, they have a retirement. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts a retirement con- contract for Sally Pass, effective October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Just like, thanks Sally for, uh, her service at Oakfield, uh, and wish her the best of luck on retirement. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes. We have another retirement. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education, uh, progressively accepts the retirement of Lee Tyler, effective January first, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Do I get a vote?
No, you, you have to be quiet over there.
Do not.
Just talking money. Uh, any discussion? Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Uh, you've been here a really long time.
Do you wanna know the statistics?
You got some for us?
I got some statistics for you.
Please throw us, yeah.
So, so Leanne Tyler has been working here since April of two thousand, or nineteen eighty-nine. She's been in the district thirty-three and a half years. Um, she started out in cafeteria making four dollars and thirty-five cents an hour, cleaning dishes. Um, moved down to a part-time, a clerk typist in the business office, uh, and a backup to the guidance secretary. Um, she was manually typing purchase orders, um, from her pool deck in the summers. Um, she used to do minutes by, um, or take notes by shorthand. Does anyone know how to do that anymore?
No.
No. Um, she did take the first bomb threat and the second one as well in the district, she said, and, um, she had to give a statement to the sheriff, someone was transported in the back of the police car. Um, and from all the students, she said they were all looking at her like, "Oh, no, she was the one who called the ambulance." They thought she was in trouble. Um, she became a clerk typist, which to a, a six-and-a-half-hour day, um, a senior financial typist in two thousand, and then became our treasurer and district office in, um, July of two thousand and five, and has been, I can say she's been a godson since I've been here. And then, she's gonna be very much missed.
Well, thank you, Christine. That's quite a timeline there.
Right? Nineteen eighty, thirty-three and a half years, one time.
She makes us behave, right, girl?
Yes, she does.
Yeah.
All right, Connie, did we, did we approve? I don't think so. Did we approve that? I'm just, I'm sorry, my...
No, I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes.
We have to abstract this.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Tyler. Um, all right, on to an appointment here, uh, for an elementary teacher. Be it resolved that Board of Education...
Secretary.
Secretary.
Secretary. I, I apologize, I'm skipping over here. Not yet. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of Brittany Kessler to the probationary position of secretary, effective November twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two, ending May twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? That you, no, she's not, she's not here tonight. All right, well, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, congratulations, uh, Brittany. We're, we're happy to have you here. Um, now, on to the elementary teacher. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of Caitlin Palmer to a three-year probationary position as an elementary teacher, effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, ending December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. She'll be assigned, uh, to the elementary six-one-one classroom. Can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Um, all right, now it's your time, Mr. Lippel. Uh, be it resolved that Alex Lippel be appointed as IT System Support Manager. He will be replacing Richard Anderson, who is retiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes. Thanks for being with us, Alex.
Thanks for having me.
Your day.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Um, tenure appointment, uh, here, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, John Fiskus. Be it resolved that Kristen Trumbly be granted tenure, effective December second, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, can I get a motion?
It's moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, congratulations, uh, Kristen.
December second.
Yeah, 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 don't mess up.
I have to say that, because sometimes when there's a tenure appointments and it doesn't start until the first day of the next school year, we tell like the teachers, behave yourself over the summer, you know, so, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you so much for staying with us. Um, we're going to, be it resolved that the Board of Education, uh, exclusively will enter executive session at seven twenty-four, uh, to continue contract negotiations. Can I get a motion? It's moved. Uh, second?
Sir.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Uh, motion passes. All right, Jackie, do you want me to put you on?